All right, everybody, welcome. It is Monday, April 21st. It is 5:32 PM. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom and I am calling this Board of Education meeting to order. Ms. Lamphier, can you please do the roll call?
Sure. Ms. Darling is not here. I am here. Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Prin?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And we also have student rep, Shake. Shake Ameed, thank you. And we also have Dr. Andreid, Dr. Scrapparty, Mr. Poska, and Mr. Gray.
Can you do the opening statement?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
So, once Ms. Lamphier is done with the opening statement, oh, Mr. Claffey made eye contact with me first. Can you do the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Lead us in it. We'll let Preet go first.
I get to say it first.
You got a minute to get nervous.
As elected officials, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens.
So, we don't have any presentations tonight, so we're going to jump right into, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Thank you, Ms. Raymond. All those in, I'm going a little too fast, aren't I?
No, that's okay. That's okay.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This brings us up to our first public question comment period. Did anybody sign up? Nobody signed up? Okay. Well, this brings us up to the superintendent's comments, so, right on time.
Yep. Excellent.
Pass the floor to you.
So, thank you. The New Hampshire School Nurses Association selected Gina Lopez as the New Hampshire School Nurse of the Year. This is a wonderful honor for Gina in her 30-plus years in school health and for the entire Nashua School District's health program. Congratulations, Gina. On Saturday, March 22nd, the Curia Museum of Art recognized eight Nashua students for their prestigious accomplishment in artwork. Their pieces are currently hanging in the museum. We're very proud of Lily Ruff from Penachak Middle School, Gianna Lucrezia, Nashua High School South, Best in Show, Brendan DeCosta, Nashua High School South, Elizabeth Chung at South High School, Sonia Kelker, South High School, Julia O'Connor, South, Alexis McCarthy from North, and Jalen Nguyen from North. Their hard work and creativity are a testament to the vibrant artistic spirit within the Nashua community. The four well-deserving hard, four well-deserving hard-working CAD architectural students received awards with distinction and cash prizes from the American Institute of Architects. They join a long list of past recognized CAD students with this year's design challenge of a 10-unit housing complex with common activity areas. Each complex building consisted of a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom apartments. Many weeks were put into becoming this year's highest awards from all of New Hampshire entries. Perhaps they can help the Nashua planning for downtown and all the apartments going in. So, congratulations to Nathan Bailey for Tink's Landing, Ryan Duvani for Hidden Oaks Estates, and Ella Mansman, and Zoe Williams for Willow Estates. Congratulations. Ten of our honors biotechnology and biomedical students competed in the New Hampshire Science and Engineering Expo at NHTI and Concord. Rigorous and authentic scientific research projects on various topics were presented. Congratulations to Mahi Pant, first-place Biocategory Award and RICO Sustainability Development Award, and third-place overall Best in Fair for the New Hampshire Society of Professional Engineers and a cash prize award. Congratulations to Angelise Pagan, first-place Earth and Science Category Award and NASA Earth Systems Science Award. Congratulations to Cassidy May for U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Service Award and the U.S. Stockholm Junior Water Prize Award. Congratulations to Madeline Zellers for the U.S. Environmental Protection Award and U.S. Stockholm Junior Water Prize Regional Award. Elisa Bellata, U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Award, and Lucas St. John for the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Service Award. Congratulations to all of them. As a reminder, next week is spring recess for the Nashua School District. I wish everyone a wonderful and restful week. Staff and students will return on Monday, May 5th for the remaining six weeks of school.
Wow.
The last day of school is June 17th. And lastly, the school department will be presenting the Board of Education's FY26 Budget Recommendation to the Board of Aldermen at City Hall tonight at 7:30. Thank you.
Wow. That was a lot of names. That was pretty awesome. This brings us up to our board response to the superintendent's comments, so I'll start over here with Ms. Raymond.
It's just very exciting to hear all the wonderful things that our students and our staff are doing, so, thank you for sharing that with us.
Ms. Prin?
I have no comment right now, just because I have no voice.
Mr. Claffey?
While we're on the topic of accolades, I thought I would point out that two of our graduates, they happen to have gone to South, were named by the Fortune magazine 30 Under 30. I don't know if anybody's already announced that, but it's pretty amazing. They're entrepreneurs, and so, they're STEM entrepreneurs, but they did go to South. All of our schools are great. Toshit Panaghriadi and Mary Zoo.
Oh. Mr. Johnson?
Just congratulations to all our students and all their successes. It's great whenever we have a long list of students accomplishing things, so thanks for sharing.
Ms. Gilio?
It's always the best way to start the meeting off with congratulating all of these people, and so, I congratulate them as well.
Yes. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Absolutely. Being the last to speak, I echo everything that everyone has said. We're really proud of our Nashua students that have gone on to do excellent, but we're proud of them all as a whole community. So, thank you, and look forward to six more weeks of school, and then you'll be out for the summer, so, enjoy all.
Ms. Lamphier?
I'm just always surprised at how fast the school year goes by. Right when you started talking, Dr. Andreid, I was like, wow, my goodness, all these kids are applying to colleges and doing all this other stuff and getting all these accolades. We're getting close to the end, and it seems like we just started. So, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Yes. It does feel like we just started. I'm sure those kids do not feel that they have just started. I'm sure they're counting down the minutes until next week. So, I want to thank you all for participating in Board Member comments. Was wondering if we could flip committee for HR first?
Do we have any student?
Oh, I'm sorry. Student comments. I apologize.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Again, just like everyone else said, congratulations to those students, those, my peers, and I'm very proud that our schools are doing so well, and I actually know some of them personally, so congratulations to them. As many of you know, I have been absent for the past few weeks due to religious reasons, but I'm now back and I'm ready to go.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome back. Okay. So, again, back to, if we're okay pushing HR up, that would be fantastic, so I will hand the floor over to Ms. Gilio.
Okay. So, I'm looking for a recommendation to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then, we have the personnel recommendations, which we presented at our meeting earlier, were approved by the HR Committee. Do we need the full board to do that? We do usually, so, yeah, I'm looking for a motion to approve the personnel recommendations.
Motion to approve the personnel recommendations.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
So, I would like to know what they are and everything. I sat through some of the meeting here in person, but I know that the community doesn't know who they are and what we're actually voting in, so I was wondering if we could tell them, so they can be as excited as we are to promote some from within and bring some new ones in.
So, Ms. Gilio has the list of resignations and nominations, and then we'll go into the vice principal nominations after.
We don't typically announce all the resignations and retirements, but there were eight resignations tonight and one retirement, but we haven't gotten to the people who are being recommended for positions yet. So, do you want me to read the names? We don't normally do that.
Mr. Raymond?
Just as a point of order, we cannot read the names until they are approved by the board because they are non-public. There are labor laws regarding those things, so until we vote as a board to approve them, they can't be released. However, you have them in your email. Ms. Cancela sent us two emails. One was just agendas, and the other one were the packets. It's the one that has the packet. It's, there's two attachments. One is the HR packet, and one is the packet for tonight. And so, it's the second page of the HR packet. And I'm super sad at all the people who are retiring and leaving.
I know.
They're not. I know all the people who are retiring are excited about retiring, but...
So, that's the list from tonight that we got. This is one addition that was added just today. So, the previous list was short one person. Okay. So, are we ready to vote on?
Any comments or questions on the revised personnel recommendations from earlier tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then, I'm sorry.
Ms. Raymond?
Just to follow up, so typically, what happens in the minutes, so if later this week you go on and look at the minutes for tonight, I think Ms. Cancela takes about five days to get them up. The list will be embedded in the minutes for the, why am I blanking? HR meeting.
Yep.
So, you can find all of the previous month's lists embedded in those minutes as well.
We also had two administrative recommendations at the meeting earlier, and so, the first one, I'm going to make a motion to elect Peter Argeropoulos to the position of Assistant Principal at Fairgrounds Middle School at an annual salary of $91,200.
Oh, second. Sorry. Any comments or questions?
He did speak to us earlier this evening, and Dr. Andreid spoke quite well of him, and we voted yes for him, so...
Yes. Ms. Raymond, I did ask your standard question.
I heard that. Thank you so much. I apologize for missing it, but I was part of the interview team, and I think everyone is super excited to have Mr. Argeropoulos going back to Fairgrounds. He's very respected there, and I think he'll fit right back in.
Yeah. He seemed pretty excited to be going back, too.
Yeah.
Which is obviously good.
Everybody but Newserals.
Yeah, everybody but Newserals is happy.
Yeah, well, I'm sure they'll have someone fantastic.
Yes. Okay, so, all those in favor of approving Mr. Argeropoulos to go over to Fairgrounds Middle School, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Secondly, I'm making a motion to elect Jason Lonergan to the position of Assistant Principal at Nashua High School South at an annual salary of $109,900.
Second.
Excellent. And I believe we have him here.
We do.
If you want to come on down and give us a little elevator speech about yourself.
We can go over that way.
Mind if I sit here?
That's good, because Ms. Raymond always has a lot of questions, so...
Yeah, just don't make eye contact with her.
I think I've answered some of her questions before. My name is Jason Lonergan. I'm finishing up my 22nd year in public education. Twenty of those years have been here in Nashua. I'm currently serving as a case manager at Nashua High South. Three years ago, I actually left administration and went back to teaching. Took some time to take some self-care and care to my family, but the reason why I'm coming back is the staff, the students, the families at Nashua High South. I'm lucky enough to have been there the last three years and see the inner workings myself. And having left administration before, I'm fully on board coming back with the climate and culture that's going on at Nashua High South, due to the students, the families, the staff, the administration that's currently there.
I forewarn, I'm shocked, Ms. Raymond, and then Mr. Claffey. Her hit technically was up first.
Mr. Claffey can ask the first question.
Okay, Mr. Claffey, go ahead.
Dr. Andreid scratching his head and anticipating. This is a comment, actually. Can I make a comment, not a question?
Yes.
I had the pleasure of working under Mr. Lonergan as a head teacher, so it wasn't just, I think maybe as a teacher, too, but I'll tell you that it was, I was 13 years ago, but I think one of the things I remember most is that the staff felt like they could go to him and he would follow through. And sometimes the outcome maybe wasn't what you wanted, but I think he was, he just was respected by students and staff, and I think Mr. Richards here, he wouldn't put somebody on his team if he didn't have complete faith in him, so. And now, we'll go to Ms. Raymond's question.
Ms. Raymond?
What are your feelings about discipline?
Sorry. I'm actually, I'm not going to ask Mr. Lonergan about discipline, because I'm pretty sure I've asked him that question before here in this setting. I do really appreciate, though, that we have a culture and climate that allows people to make adjustments as they need for their life, and I just think that's fantastic, and that's how you retain good people. So, my question is about whether or not you think that going back into the classroom and doing the case management, again, after such a long time away, will change your practice as an assistant principal when you go back into that role? If there's anything that you learned or anything that's different? I didn't preset him up with this one either, so, apologize to...
First off, Mr. Claffey, thank you for your comments. I appreciate them. I think in any role that you take within a schoolhouse, there's something to be gained, and then you can bring those lenses, those perspectives, to whatever it is that you're getting ready to do or currently doing. I have a renewed respect. I've always respected teachers, but in my particular role, I'm a case manager for special education, and there's an abundance of paperwork along with meeting the needs of your students, and you have to do that simultaneously throughout the course of a day, throughout the course of a quarter, a semester, and a school year. And I work with some great people, not only in the case management side of things, but teachers, special educators, who are delivering curriculum and supporting students within the regular ed setting and the special ed setting. And I think as I move back into administration, I'm able to take those snapshots, those experiences that I've had with these folks, and quite frankly, an appreciation for what they have done for me. I was a teacher for four years before I got into administration, and I did administration for 15 years, and I was telling the folks at Central Office, I'm really like a new teacher when it comes to special ed and case management. I've been able to lean on some people at Nashua High South and some people who have moved on to places like Brentwood. They've been a real support for me. So, I'm going to take that experience and use that as I'm making day-to-day decisions and working with students, but also trying to do my best to repay them and support them in what they're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. We had a first and a second for that motion, correct?
Yes, we did.
Okay. So, all those in favor of approving the nomination for Mr. Lonergan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Well, tomorrow morning, you'll be going? No?
No, I'm going to fulfill my role, and then I'll be ready to step up July 1st, but thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I appreciate, I appreciate the board being flexible on the agenda. Our meeting did start a little bit early because we have that Board of Aldermen meeting later, so, that's why we're all convening a little bit earlier today. But I will hand the floor over now to Ms. Lamphier for committee on Finance and Operations.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to award a contract to Cape and Island Tennis and Track for resurfacing the North High School track in the amount of $136,700, along with a project contingency of $10,000 for any issues that might arise, for a project total of $146,700, and funding will come from the school district's deferred maintenance fund.
Second, their motion. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All in favor of, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ameed, go ahead.
I will say, as a track athlete myself at North, I am very happy about this.
Yes. Excellent. Ms. Raymond?
Is it going to be a color, or is it going to stay the red? I'm just curious. Red? Okay.
Okay. Cool. I don't know if color matters or not, because South is black, right?
It's red. I think, the reason I was asking is because when we redid South two years ago, there was quite a bit of discussion about whether or not to make it purple, and I think it was like, going to be more expensive at the time.
Harder to like, maintain, because it...
And we were pinching pennies, so...
Yeah, we didn't even discuss a different color. We're just going with the basic red, so...
Okay. All right. Well, any other comments or questions about the track? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the award to contract, approving the contract to Cape and Island Tennis and Track for resurfacing the Nashua High School track, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I'm making a motion to approve the request for proposal, request for proposal response submitted by First Student and to proceed forward with a five-year contract, that's school year '25, '26 through '29, '30, pending legal review of the contract and district acceptance signature.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey.
Any comments or questions? Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
I know we talked about this during the budget process, and I just want to say that I'm really appreciative of all the work that administration has done, and also First Student, because I think First Student has been working with us to try and make this a more affordable contract, but I would be remiss if I didn't point out that I'm really nervous about the last few years of this contract, because it continues to go up, and I worry about our district budget situation next year and the year after, because I know that the adequacy aid from the state is not going to go up enough to even cover this contract, so, that's it. I just, I don't think we have a choice, and I appreciate the hard work that First Student is doing. I'm just really nervous about the future.
I think we all are, yeah. Any comments or questions?
I just wanted to say, for anyone listening that hasn't, that didn't watch the Finance Committee meeting, that the cost per day, per hour for a bus is $482.75 for next year, and in 2029, 2030, it's going to be $637.09, so it is really, it really is a substantial raise, so...
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
And that's a concern that I had, like, could we, I know that we generally work with this company, but they, can we go back out for bids? Because I know that there was a couple companies that had contacted us, so I was wondering if we could look at those without doing this five- or six-year contract, because, like Ms. Raymond said, we have to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible in the next couple of years, and we already don't have, we talked about this in the budget, and we don't have it for, really, for this year, and we're going to pull it out of here and pull it out of there and cut a couple buses. Is there anything that we can do with...
I see your hint of response.
Sure. So, I think it's a fair question. I hear the concern on the table. I think from the administration side, you know, the biggest reason we went out for an RFP is because the contract's ending at the end of this year. There were five to six companies that came in for the initial kind of question and more information, and unfortunately, First Student, or fortunately, First Student was the only response to the RFP. The other big, and I mentioned this during Finance and Ops, the other big company here in the state is STA. They didn't even bid, right? The infrastructure to go ahead and truly find space that can fit 90 buses, give or take, for this school district in our size, I think is a lot to ask a company to come forward with, right, from an overall, overall capital count. I think we've done a lot of work internally to truly step back and have conversations to say, how can we be more strategic? How can we go ahead and cut some costs related to transportation? We've had some conversations with our charter schools. We are working with them. But again, just a friendly reminder from the budget presentation, I get it, it's kind of sticker shock and shock value, but this is right in line to what our other school districts are paying, and even at the end of this five-year agreement, yes, seems like a lot of money, for sure, but it's also a little bit lower than some of our neighboring schools. So, I think if we can continue, you know, to really just push back on our families to say, hey, here is our process related to transportation, right? What is the commitment from the district? It is to provide reliable, safe transportation of the students. I think the pushback we sometimes get on the administration side is, you know, we don't want kids walking a certain distance. Well, if we continue to say yes to everybody, then that's going to really drive up the cost, and that's going to go ahead and make some of these routes pretty lengthy. So, I hear the concern. I think we continue year over year, should look at it. Where can we make additional cuts if needed? But unfortunately, I think this is something that is needed, and it is the only organization out there, and they've been really supportive.
Dr. Andreid?
If I can just add to that, again, I want to be cognizant on, we do have a good relationship with First Student right now. They've been really responsive for any needs, but every time we talk about we're going back out to bid, it's hard to maintain a positive relationship and partnership of equal investment into the partnership if we're just turning around saying we're looking for somebody else to undercut them. Again, we don't want to be paying that much. Again, in this motion, it looks like, you know, like where we're asking before the contract goes, before you have a legal review, and there's always clauses in there about how do you sever the relationship, right, or partnership, and it might be for performance. One thing, I think, whether it's a partnership with, for a student or a different transportation company, the other option out there is, do you take transportation in-house? And what's the cost of that? Right? And that's a bond, right? Like, to buy 100 buses, to put the infrastructure in place, to make sure our HR department is hiring bus drivers, and we have a lot to, you know, store all the buses. Now, we're paying for gas, so there's an aspect on it, too, of how much does it cost to bring it in-house? And I think that for a student contract, it might be actually much cheaper if we were running our own transportation. So, again, we could explore that in the future, but I just want to be careful on, again, as we go forward, there will be language in the contract on how we sever, and if we're ever going to explore, it would take us a couple of years to say if we were going to do something in-house, if that was going to be cheaper. But again, as much as we had some bumps and bruises and obstacles in the road at the beginning of this year, First Student has been a trusted partner for a number of years with the school districts.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the request for proposal response submitted by First Student and to proceed forward with a five-year contract pending legal review of the contract and district acceptance signature, say aye. of the contract and district acceptance signature, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the next motion is to approve increased athletic user fees, as presented, beginning with the 2025-26 school year. These increases will go into effect June 1st, 2025, when fall registration opens.
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels-Williams.
So this was one of the other ones that I wanted to talk about as a board and see if everyone agreed with the increase of the fees for the different sports, because we do cap it at 1,500, which was nice for the year, but it is expensive to place sports with all the things that parents have to get for the children, and I think it was at like 23% that was being covered or reduced. So I just wanted everyone to know that it... I seen it as a burden to the students and the families in the community, but I wanted to know how the board's seen it.
Ms. Lamphier.
So anyone that qualifies for free or reduced meals through the Food Services Program is exempt from athletic fees, and we have, you know, we have a considerable amount of sports, but the sports that currently pay $65 are going to 80. The sports that currently pay 175 are going to be 200, and ice hockey will be from 450 to 500. So those are the changes. And I gave Ms. Jengris a shout-out at our Finance Committee meeting, because she was there presenting, and, you know, if you look back over the past 10 years or so with COVID and the huge hit the athletic program took, I think the fact that we have such a strong athletic program is because of Ms. Jengris and the hard work that she does. And I know that she cares deeply about the program and about the students, and I really, I trust that she wouldn't ask us to waive the athletic fees unless it was really necessary. So that's how, that's how I feel about it.
Mr. Claffey, then, Ms. Raymond.
And if you look at your packet, I think Ms. Jengris points out that there hasn't been an increase since 2015. I can't remember offhand how many programs do not have an increase, but I know you mentioned the ones that do. I think football doesn't, which is one of them. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. The ones that are currently at 175, which are baseball, basketball, field hockey, lacrosse, soccer, softball, volleyball, and wrestling are not, unless I'm reading the wrong, I'm reading the wrong one, I'm sorry. Football, golf, gymnastics, swim and dive, and alpine ski are not being increased at all. Alpine ski is 250, and the other ones I named, football, golf, gymnastics, and swim and dive, are already 200.
Ms. Raymond.
Oh, I had printed out from the packet from Finance for myself to see, and it looks to me like, with the exception of hockey, it's a $15 to $25 fee increase, which I'm worried, I'm worried about our families affording. However, my question was, currently, if your student is a three-sport athlete, they waive the fee for the third sport, will that continue?
Yes, absolutely.
And then the $1,500 cap is regardless of how many students the family has, so if we have a family with three or four kids, they're not going to be putting out all of the fees for all of the sports if they're all athletic.
That's the 1,500.
Okay. Thank you. I did note also, when I printed it out, that Ms. Jengris shows that we have been in the red in athletics all but three years since we started this, which is not awesome.
Yeah. If we're going to rally against anything, man, it's going to be sneakers. Got to buy those every six months at how many hundreds of dollars? Life is expensive.
Can I follow-up question about that? Do we have something within the district or a partnership with anyone to help people afford some of the athletic gear? Like, I know when I went to buy my daughter sneakers for tennis this year and something else, Dick's was running a promotion with Cal Ripken Baseball, and they, I was, we were trying on shoes, and this lovely lady was like, oh, my kid's not buying their shoes here, would you like my 20% off coupon? And I said, yes, I would. So can we look into doing something like that, or do we do that already that I just didn't know about?
So, and I actually had reached out to Ms. Jengris just on my own about this, because I didn't want other students to not participate in any extracurricular activity. We, and yes, there are partnerships with some of the sports stores that help with equipment and also with personal embellishments. There used to be kind of like a loner shed, where I think it was South's Honor Society was managing it, and it was a whole little shed, and you could go in and donate your lacrosse sticks or your old football equipment, but that just stopped being manned appropriately the last couple of years and has kind of fallen by the wayside. But I've had people reach out to me who are interested in doing it, certainly not something that the board would oversee or even the board would run, but just even as a parent, I would be interested in, I would be, I'd volunteer for that, guys, as a normie. So the opportunity is there to create kind of this loner shed, but it needs to be something that can be consistently managed, not just this year, and we can't really ask other teachers to take care of it, because that's additional responsibilities. So there is some work that can happen to create that. Maybe it's the Honor Society's managing it, but yeah, it's happened before.
All right, thank you. I just, I know for a lot of students, sports are the thing that keeps them coming to school and keeps them engaged in school, so I want to make sure that we're not placing it out of reach. So my final question is, if there is a family that perhaps doesn't qualify for free and reduced lunch, but is having some dire economic circumstances, what should that family do?
Reach out to Ms. Jengris, and case-by-case basis, she can approve sliding scale fees or just full scholarship.
And she was, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Claffey, go ahead.
She was asked about that at the meeting, Committee meeting, and she, I couldn't, I can't remember how many families she said, but she...
Twenty, somewhere around 23%. I'm sorry, just trying to answer your question.
23%?
I think 23% was the free and reduced lunch.
No, I'm talking about if a family doesn't qualify, but they need help, she said that there are students receiving that help, that's all.
Yep. And that's right on when you sign up for the sports stuff, there's a little asterisk.
Thank you. I just wanted to say it, assuming that someone watches our meetings.
Yes.
Now it's out there.
Okay, so any other comments or questions about this? Okay, so all those in, I'm sure begrudging favor of improve, of approving the increased athletic user fees, as presented, beginning with school year '25, '26, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, so my last motion is to approve the fiscal year '25 March transfer report.
Second. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the fiscal year March transfer report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything else you want to add from FNO, Ms. Lamphier?
We did actually take our first look at the, at the year-end report, the year, well, the year-end forecast, and it looks, it looks pretty good. So we're going to, it looks like, right now, we're going to have a surplus of $167,628 that will go back to the city, and of course, that sounds like a lot of money, but we have a $182 million operating budget. So the fact that Mr. Gray, on her first year, has managed our finances to that point where it's just balancing all the figures and everything that's kept with this number, I thought was really impressive, and I was really happy about it, and, you know, despite all my concerns about all of our expenses, I think she's doing a great job, and I'm really happy with, I'm just really glad that she's part of the district. So just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
We all agree.
Appreciate that. I think just to kind of reiterate, this was the first forecast. We'll continue to do them in April, May, and June. There is a substantial amount that we give back every year based off of benefits to the city. We are still seeing some pretty substantial increases related to contract services, related to special education, and out-of-district tuition. So as I mentioned during Finance and Operations, we'll continue to keep a close eye on that as we move towards the tail end of the year. But thank you for the comments. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, guys. Next up is Committee on Policy, so I will give the floor to Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. We met on the 15th, and we had no other things outstanding that hadn't been voted on, so everything on the agenda tonight is on a first reading, and I don't expect us to be voting on it tonight. I did get an email about BEDB asking for a little bit of a language change, just on to change, the board may choose not to deal with every agenda item to address, because there are times when there's something on the agenda and we decide on the fly that we're not going to do it that night for a lot of reasons.
I just feel like not dealing with it felt very like, I don't feel like dealing with that tonight.
Yeah, I don't know where the language came from.
It just sounded more professional.
It's been there at least for a couple of years, so, since at least 2021, but I think it's been there since, like, probably for 10 or 20 years.
I think it has, but I just...
We also talked about at Policy, Policy EFAA, which is School Lunch Program Meal Changes. It looks like there's a lot of changes, but that's because we are merging two existing policies into one policy and as a replacement of those. And the other, the big change, though I don't really think it's a change to practice, but it's a change to the policy, is that we're asking that written communication be sent home and students become $10 behind. Our previous policy said $20 behind, $10 is five days in elementary school and three days at the, well, not quite three days, at the high school. But you'll know in both the new policy and the old policy, students who don't have money that day to pay still get food. We don't, we don't deny them food, but once they get a little bit behind, we want to make sure that we're having that communication home with families so that the school can offer assistance in making sure that kids have what they need. We also have, hold on, I just have to scroll a little bit further. It's much more convenient when I'm flipping. We have Policy GCF, which I was hoping for some feedback from the board on. This is about the members of the board sitting in on interviews of assistant principals and above. And then Policy IKFB is some name changes that are happening to the Nashua Center for Lifelong Learning instead of the Nashua Adult Education Program. And Policy KF, I don't see anybody here to comment on it, but I would very much like some feedback from the board or the community before our next meeting on KF, because just like with the athletics policy, we're looking at increasing fees for renting our facilities. The fee change is not a lot, it's an average of $25 for nonprofit agencies, and about $100 for for-profit organizations. And then we've also added some language about having extra staff if you have a huge event of over 250 people, that was requested by the Fire Marshal, and some language about when groups routinely use some of our equipment that wears down quickly, like gym mats for gymnastics or wrestling or cheerleading, having some sort of annual user fee, because the athletic department is having to replace those more frequently than they would if we weren't letting organizations use them. And they're costly, they're probably prohibitively costly for some of these nonprofit groups to buy their own, but given that the athletic department has been in the red for a while, I'd like to be a little bit more fiscally responsible. So people can take a look at those. If you have language suggestions or questions, Policy meets again on May 20th, which is, I think, before this will be heard again, or we can just hold these until we meet again as policy. It's not, we meet again on the 12th, so send them to me before the 12th.
Okay, perfect. I already sent you mine.
Yes, I mentioned it out loud just now.
I know, I just wanted to say it again. Okay, thank you, Ms. Raymond. Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation, I see no bullet points, and I know Ms. Prin is not feeling great, so if you have a very short update or none at all, it's fine.
No, I can do, we just, we had a great meeting last week talking about the Intensive Needs Program. It was really very enlightening and eye-opening to hear all the hard work that goes in to preparing kids for post-high school, and knowing that kids can stay in the program until they're 22 as well. It was really great. And just to see the passion and enthusiasm of the teachers who work in that program was really nice, too. But thank you for letting me keep it short.
Yes. Well, we want to, we want to take care of our own. Okay, so this brings us up, we don't have any unfinished business, this brings us up to new business, so I will give the floor to Dr. Andre.
The first item is, we're looking for a recommendation to approve the FY26 LEA General Assurances for its signature by the BOE President and Superintendent. In your packet, you should have those assurances. Just, we sign these every year. There's just two major or minor updates to this year's assurances, and it's in reference to Title VII and Title IX. There was an executive order that was issued back in June 20th of 2025 from the President, just referring to DEI programs, and the second executive order was around defending women from gender ideology and restoring biological truths to federal government. I've reviewed both executive orders, we're in, we're in full compliance with Title VII and Title IX at this point, and the executive orders didn't change any of our practices. So those were just the two minor changes to the assurances. We were in compliance last year to Title VII under the Civil Rights Act, we're in compliance with Title IX with all of our operating and grants, so we're in good standing with these general assurances, and the rest of the document is a copy from last year. So just looking for a recommendation for Ms. Bishop and I to sign these assurances.
I'll make that recommendation. Can I make it if I'm signing it?
No.
Well, technically, I can.
I moved to...
Somebody else wants to motion it, it's fine.
I'll make the motion, I have a question.
Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. Your question, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. So I guess my question is, this is a state form, not a federal form?
Yeah, it's from the New Hampshire Department of Education.
Okay, and this is different than, because this form I've seen before, except for the new Item VI here with some of the new ABCs, because every year we have to read it, and we used to have to say it on the, in the official minutes that every person had read it, we all had to sign it. So, but I guess my question is, is this different than the super-special extra form that had to be signed that the Commissioner of Education has posted on?
Correct.
Okay. So in that case, I'm fine with you signing this, because this is mostly a state thing that we do every year. But I have lots of thoughts and I, feelings about our responsibilities under New Hampshire law and other laws to protect our students. So I'm just going to leave that there. So I, this particular one, because it's only those two bullet points, and I frankly think they say nothing, I'm okay with it.
I just...
Ms. Daniels-Williams.
I just had a question. So we said that it was okay, because we signed this last year and nothing had changed, but I just thought that, because the Title VII for the Civil Rights Act of 1964, but this is including any guidelines in guideline, guidance issued consistent with the executive order. So this is an addition to that. So I just wanted to make sure that we are understanding that there is more added to what we passed last year, and if that was okay, because like, I'm not 100% sure exactly... Because like, I'm not 100% sure exactly word for word. I have seen it. I have referenced it in other mediums in my life, but just the ending, the racial, the radical and wasteful government DEI programs and preferencing that was issued is separate. So I would, I would be hoping that we're all understanding what that is. Because this is saying in addition, including any guidance from this. So that changed a whole lot to what we do with DEI, what we're allowed to do on the federal level. And it's saying, including that executive order. So that means it's in addition to. So as long as we're okay with that, I'll vote with the board. But I think that we have to remember that this is including what has changed as of this day, in addition to seven, because the seven didn't change.
I'll have Dr. Andre address that.
So that's what, again, quickly I referred to at the beginning, like those were the two changes. And when I review the executive orders and then what we're doing in the districts, we are in compliance so of, when you read the executive order and how they define DEI programs, we are not running any DEI programs that, how the executive order defines it. It does not mean we are not doing everything possibly for all of our students and doing whatever it takes. But when you look at the definitions in, in the executive order, we don't meet those categories that we would have to stop anything that is outlining those definitions. So we can carry on doing business if we wanted to, again, where, again, to increase our diversity, equity, inclusion, like in anything that we have in our grants, do not violate the executive order. So again, there is an addition to it, but when you read the language in the executive order, Nashua is in good standings in both of those categories.
I just, I want to, I have something to add to that is just, I mean, I think we do everything for our students and we follow the law the way that we're supposed to. I mean, this is just politics. This is just somebody trying to be heavy-handed with a bunch of, they're not changing our practices. They're not changing how we work with students. They're not changing hiring. It's just, it's, I have words about it. Ms. Raymond, then Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So just to follow up on that, because I have some significant reservations about some of the stuff that's happening at the state level that's gotten thrown into the budget that is, in my opinion, extraordinarily discriminatory and inappropriate. And we are the second most diverse city in New Hampshire, and that is something that I think we all chose Nashua because we take great pride in that and it's something we enjoy for our, our families and we like that about this community. So other districts have been in the news in the last two weeks for suing over some of these executive orders and signatures. I just want to be clear that that is a different form than this form.
It's a different form. Yes.
Okay. And I, I think we should probably have a discussion with an attorney present about that different form, but this is a money form and I, we need money for our kids.
We can definitely have Attorney Clausen come in and chat with us.
Thank you.
In a non-public or a non-meeting.
So that, I just want to be really clear because I, I'm incredibly hesitant to sign anything that says that we aren't going to fully support every student regardless in our district and that everybody is welcome here. Like, I don't want to get into a situation where we're like that Idaho school district that's not allowed to say everybody is welcome here. Like, that cannot happen in Nashua.
No, I don't think we have that support here.
Okay.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Have we sought legal counsel on this? Because DEI also covers certain special education things. It's not, this isn't only about gender and it's not only about race. DEI also does cover some of those things. Have we sought legal advice before we give our, and our lawyer says okay?
So we've had conversations around Title VII and Title IX with our legal counsel. And so again, it, like, it's, we're in good standing. Again, we're around Title VII and Title IX.
By adding this rider with the additional, where it says additional, have we talked to them about this form that we're getting ready to give permission to sign? Have we talked to them about this one?
So.
Not just the two separate?
Yeah, no. So just not specifically around the executive order, but when we go through all our grant activities, there's nothing that, if you look at what's in the executive order of what we can and can't do, there's nothing that prohibits us from moving forward on our current actions. So it's a Ms. Raymond's point of increasing the amount that we're doing. So again, I think we're in good standing and again, around Title VII and Title IX, we're moving in the right direction. And there's nothing in those executive orders that I think limits the work that we're doing. But again, if you want me to reach back out to Attorney Bennett, I'd be more than happy to do so.
I, I just have one left. When is it due? Like, it's, we meet again on May 12th. Is this the circumstance where we could get?
I think it's, sorry, it's the.
June 1st?
Yeah, June 1st.
Excuse me, Ms. Bishop. I'm just checking the calendar, one second. So that's six weeks. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
So I was wondering, can we refer it to our lawyer and then bring it back for May 12?
And him, too.
And him, too.
I'm okay with it.
That's the will of the committee.
Should we take a vote on that?
Well, you would just vote no on signing right now.
Which are it.
Table it. Mr. Claffey?
Is there any risk to waiting?
No, it's just more about getting the form to the, the Department of Education.
But we won't miss a deadline?
Yep.
Just means I have to be available to come and sign. It's okay.
So there's no reason not to, I mean, you want to get it done, but there's no pressing?
No, we have a couple of weeks to get it done. So, okay, so we'll table this and we'll come back and have, do you want Attorney Bennett or Attorney Clausen to come?
It's usually Attorney Bennett, who does more the Title IX.
Okay. I, I'd like to ask him about that other form as well.
Okay.
And the lawsuits.
Okay. Okay. So moving along, we're tabling that. Sorry, I'm all mixed up now.
Sorry.
No, it's my, my, it's my tablet doing something.
I have it.
Thank you. Okay, cool. Back to you, anyway.
I'm looking for a recommendation to approve the Region 16 Career and Technical Education Agreement through June 30th of 2028. And again, that document is in your packet. We've, I'll look for the motion for us and then I can add to it.
Are you making this motion, Ms. Raymond?
I'm making the motion.
Okay. I'll second it.
I'd like to say, I was at the grocery store last week sometime and a family from Hollis that I knew from when my children were tiny and in karate was shopping and they stopped me to tell me that their child takes a bus over here every day for some CTE classes and it has been an incredible experience that they've taken underwater robotics, then they've taken biotechnology, and now they're thinking about that as a career. So I just think it's a huge strength for us to have these programs and to also be in a collective with the other schools. Because I know people, I know my own kids' friends who take buses to Alveron to take classes, so. It's fantastic. I didn't grow up in an environment where you could do that, so I just think this is such a strength.
Yeah.
Just a, a little background. So we did meet with the surrounding school districts of Hollis Brookline, Sohegan, and Merrimack to talk about this agreement, to make sure we were all on the same page. This is an update on the, on the agreement. There was an outstanding or a longstanding agreement that just needed to be revised. This is a three-year agreement. And again, all three sending districts, their Board of Educations will be approving this document as well. And I really want to give a shout out to Hollis Brookline, Sohegan, and Merrimack for being collaborative and making sure that we have a great regional partnership that maximizes our incredible resources in our CTE programs and allows for both college and career pathways in this region. I think it's a gem. We're lucky to have these programs and it's a really good partnership. So this is just memorializing a lot of the work going on and then how do we improve it moving forward.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
I just wanted to say, the CTE, we've done so much work over the last couple of years. I'm very proud of that here in the Nashua School District. So thank you for everyone that has contributed to it, the teachers that have come on board last year and are doing everything. So thank you. It's making us stand out.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Region 16 CTE Agreement through June 30th, 2028, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I don't think we have any liaison reports. We have JS SBC this Thursday. Am I missing any other liaison reports? No. Do we have anybody signed up for second public comment? No? Okay. So we, if you guys are okay, board member comments, and then we do have a non-public. We do need to be down at City Hall for 7:30, so I'm trying to be efficient with our time. But would you guys be okay if we did board member comments and then went into non-public and let everybody go and then we can close out the meeting?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So let's go on to board member comments.
Oh, you just heard them, so I'm good.
Yes. And I, Ms. Daniels-Williams actually commented about being last, last time. So you can be first this time and we'll go this way around.
Well, I'm, I'm thankful to see all the good things that are going on in the CTE Department. I'm thankful for all the students that are going on to college this year and look forward to seeing everyone on the graduations for 2025. Six more weeks, y'all.
Ms. Gilio?
I have no comment tonight.
Mr. Johnson?
Just quick, I wanted to thank the administration and all the board members for all the hard work that went into the budget. It was quite a meeting and there was a lot of public reaction to it. And I just want everyone to know that this board works hand in hand with each other and with the administration to accomplish what we need for our students and our teachers and our community. So I thank everyone for that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Claffey?
None.
Ms. Prin?
No comment.
And Ms. Raymond says she's all done, or does she have more?
No, I, I shared my thoughts with you already.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. So Ms. Lamphier?
No, no comment.
Okay. So I would be looking to go into non-public under RSA 91A32C.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Thank you. It needs to be roll call. Do you want to do roll call or do you want me to?
You can do it.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Is it not A?
It's C.
All right. Yes.
Ms. Prin?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. We are now in non-public. It is 6:36.